Good evening, we'll call the City of Norah's only Board of Appeals. We'll call the meeting to order for February eleventh. Twenty twenty five, seven oh three. We'll call Dave Martin, President Bob Phoenix, President Ed Opera Rock, President Dottie Travers.
Present.
Mark Benjamin, President also present for Chuck and Catherine Rose. Right over there. Uh, we do have a quorum. So all. All members will be seated. Communications. Nope. Uh, acceptance of the December tenth meeting?
Um, I wanted to point out typo, but I don't have a copy of it on here.
Thank you.
Yeah, there should be.
Is that?
Right, that's the agenda.
Oh, this is very, very, yeah, next page.
Next page?
Uh, oh, sorry. Okay, no, it's not there, I thought it was, sorry. Oh, you're right.
Uh, there you go, let me find it again. Sorry. So yesterday is when I read. It's glaring then, but it's not now.
I had one. On the second page. In the paragraph where I, Mark Benjamin asked if the knock box containing unit keys was mounted. That's Knox, K N O X, it's a trade.
Hmm, it was it.
That was the one, that was the one, okay. It's a capital K, because it's a, it's a brand. Any others errors, emissions corrections? Hearing none?
Motion to approve minutes of February eleven.
As corrected.
As corrected.
On second, all those in favor?
Bobby, Zai.
Do you know?
Hi.
Dottie?
Hi.
Mark Benjamin, I. Prove as correct, as ended. Um, old business? Not correct, that's well, uh, new business. Um, application V twenty four twelve, one oh five on Eco Street, request for use variance for zoning regulation, section two point three, neighborhood commercial zone standards. For the purpose of the construction of a single family home, where a single family home is not permitted use in the zone. Subjected subdivision approval. Property of Glarimos Soria, application of Glarimos Soria, assesses map A four, block two, lot seven, not inward commercials on. Exhibits. Uh, exhibit one, one oh five on Eco Street variance app, three pages. Number two is one oh five on Eco Street, gift card, two pages. Any C B legal notice? For February eleventh, twenty four five. Four is the aboveers little bit letter, five is the others list, six is the zoning map. Five is the only go proposed split. I'm sorry. Seven is the people, post what eight is a potential home, eight is a memorandum. Um, from CCP regarding the little five, the new place street. Ten is the minutes from the CCP. And eleven is the right turn of the recorded vote. For this, from the CCP. Yes, so I take a minute and go through this before we. Then the minutes are kind of lengthy from the CCP, so I believe your copy should have this section highlighted. It's gonna, it's actually the very last page of them.
Yeah, I saw that. And question about that CCP vote? You may not know, I don't know, it looks like it was three positive, two negative.
Right.
Any idea what, why?
Let me just tell them.
That's three to two.
Yeah.
Any idea why the two said no?
It's, no, there was no.
No reason.
No reason given here.
Based on the minutes, it didn't look there was any real discussion on it, no.
Yeah, I mean, the most discussion was the end of its explanation. Which was in the minutes, that was kind of the most discussion that there was. Is that right there? What can you add, or is there more? That was, that was what she, just the, she explained the details, she read that right out of the regulations.
There's that.
One three. Uh, that's the last one.
Oh, yeah, no, I saw that, I thought it goes my to the. Yeah.
Ten, two. I just. I'm just gonna read it into the record for everybody. Uh, seven point ten point two additional considerations for use variances. No use variances shall be granted where dimensional variance would relieve the exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship. No use variance for business use or industrial use should be granted in a residential zone. The use variant shall be granted for an industrial use in a business or special zone. A use variant shall only be granted where without the use variants, the private property would be rendered valueless. For any use variance application, the zoning board of appeal shall refer the application to the CCP. The zoning board shall provide the commission on the city plan within thirty five days to review and comment on the application. So. You guys want to read it yourself, but. Pass it around.
That's dealing with. Variance for commercial, inter-residential.
It's. Yeah, it's going the opposite way.
That's what I thought.
You know, it's going industrial, it's going commercial, inter-residential. But it's still a change. Usually those are more objectionable.
Also help me understand the, the neighborhood commercial area, which is this. Property is, that's, that's an area that is designated as. Both. Available for commercial and. Residential or no?
No, no, commercial.
Commercial.
Or in, in or mixed use, so.
Okay.
Mixed use would be a. Commercial building with a residential occupancy like on the second floor.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and so the issue is, this is the. Application for a residential. House in a commercial area.
It has.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, I got it.
Oh, great, thank you. So, my question to Richard is. The subdivision map.
Oh, what happened? Sorry. Richard gets straightened out first. Okay. Put that up there so I don't hit the button again.
Alright, so my question is, um. And it's, I guess it surrounds the exhibit sheet, the subdivision, uh. Map.
This one here about?
Yes. I understand we're voting on the property as a whole, as it is laid out in the description.
Correct.
And is this to? Is this variance to facilitate building of a. Residential property on the right side of the subdivision?
Yeah, so.
Now, okay, if I, based on that. Um, would that piece of property? Still maintain its commercial zoning? Once the subdivision is approved?
Yes.
Because it's on exactly. It's got a.
Yes, so we.
This is within that zone.
So.
Commercial zone.
This is all, that's all in commercial zone. Okay, so in, in theory, just to clarify, in theory, he could go to subdivision now and subdivide the lot. Um. And. Have a conforming lot, but it's still restricted to the commercial use, so. I advised him to apply for the variance first before he spent thousands of dollars in survey work in case the variance was denied.
Yeah.
I get on it, you know, see. And go through subdivision, get an approval, and then not be able to do what he wanted to do in the end, so I figured this was the best first step.
Okay. Can you go back to the other one cycle?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you go back to the previous slide there? Can you explain what the circle thirty five or thirty four, these are?
These are a lot of them. These, these were old, old assessors numbers.
Okay.
All the sensor lot numbers. So the lot right now is lot seventy.
Okay.
But at one time, it was lot thirty five, thirty four.
So, so the, what I see outlined in blue is in fact, one lot.
Right.
Owned by these people.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I.
Now with the subdivision of the lots, the, the new lot that will be created. Will buildings being proposed for that lot be born?
Yeah, what he's.
Except for the commercial. Except aspect of the zoning.
Resident, yeah.
Okay. That is my question. Thank you.
This is the one that was reserved. This is the most difficult one.
Well, it is.
And it's, it's better to get it figured out before we start taking testimony or really get.
Yeah, I, so I, I'm gonna have another question, so again, back to the. The slide on top.
This, this here?
No, no.
There's not so divided, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
So. I'm also confused about the address, one oh five, no go.
Yeah.
That if the new house is going to be put in on the right hand side, that then become. Something's after street?
Yeah, the assessor would assign that at that gas.
Okay. That, so that would be some other, that would be something separate street, who does that, the coast off?
Nope, the assessor.
Well, the assessor, yeah.
I'll, to correct you, I think the most difficult we had, uh, one we had was the front yard setback in the backyard.
Oh, yeah, no, but this one took, we spent the more, most time on.
On, on the front end, on the back side, it's usually on the backside.
Yeah, that's true.
Trying to figure out the front yard and the backyard.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that.
Okay. Um. Thanks for red, you gave that.
Yeah.
So we're ready for. Yeah, okay, great. Could the applicant please come forward? Name and address for the record. Come on up, have a seat.
Excuse me, my name is. I'm the owner of the.
Great, thank you. Nice to meet you. Explain to the board what you'd like to do, why you need a variance to do it.
Actually, we speak to you a lot because I.
Okay, we need you to explain to the board what you would like to, like to do, and why you need a variance to do it.
Okay. When. We bought this place was like this, like this now. But in the, in the beginning, we put together to pay less taxes, that's what the engineer told us. So now it's required to, to divide and build another house. Because my sister is getting all, and has an illness, he cannot leave far away from me. She lives in Monville. She has her house over there. And we are the only two. Uh, from the family lives in the United States. So we want to be together. And that's why, yeah, I showed you, I showed you over there, the design of the house, that's more or less what we want. We don't want nothing excited now, we just want to be together. Because, like I tell you again, she is getting old, and she has illness, which cannot be alone. So, that's the reason, there's no another reason. So, because I like the way it is now. I, as long as I bought that place, I've been like that. Because I like the trees, I like the, the bills, I like all the, 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 the day coming, I come into my back house. So, but, right now, I need to, 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 to the other decision. To, to build another house.
Um. The surrounding properties on the, basically on the far side of the street in that commercial zone, are those houses? On the, on the, maybe you know this, Rich. But, on the.
Here.
Yeah, are the, are those, are those buildings houses, or are they, um, commercial buildings?
No, uh, my house is, is all the way the by the, the job back.
Uh huh.
It's big, it's almost to the, to, to the other street. So, doesn't want about anyone.
I took.
Want to be in the middle, and we still have space. In the beginning, we want to do. Two houses, like a twin houses. But now, we are start to think of the only one, they are bigger. Now, when I be less foreign, this, this, the, the, this, um, miles.
Yeah, like I said, I, I took out by the, the, the building on the right. Yeah, that, that, I think is a doctor's office.
Uh, it was a doctor's office, then it went to some sort of a school, and now they, their C H R is converting it to.
Hmm.
Um, a facility.
Being renovated, yeah, some, some business. But I think the other structures on the left. And even on five off the, probably over there, I think those, those look to me like. Okay. I don't know, we took a look.
Yeah, I believe, I believe I'm hitting in that area.
Yeah.
Separated from the cemetery by the other.
Okay, I, I, I get the general idea now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We know when, sorry, um, to, uh, to staff, do we know when, um. The zoning was changed to commercial?
I don't know.
Yeah, I, I mean, it has to have been changed at some point, right, it sure looks like it.
Right, yeah, well, the hospital's there, and.
Yeah.
A lot of doctors' offices are. Um, and have been, uh, made out of the conversion of the residential. So. That, that was, that was why I was wondering.
What, what size house is going in there, or he intends to put in?
How big is the house?
This, this is more than that.
Do they have anything, have any dimensions on it?
It's enough, the space will be enough with the space between the, the construction. Even though we can adjust the house in that to the, 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 the old construction. Because between the old construction and the, the, the new one we project, it's a lot of space. So, that's the parking, can be deemed, and so, doesn't want to be about any of, of neighbors.
Okay.
I'm looking about a thousand square feet. Based on, um, based on the features that are. No, based on the features, uh, it's like the interior sized doors, we have thirty two, or the exterior door at thirty six. Uh, projecting that out.
Well, it almost looks like two separate units here, one on the left and one on the right.
Yeah.
That's just the styling of it, Dottie, yeah.
Yeah, what, I guess the sister's on one side and he's on the other, I guess.
No, no, no.
No.
No. I, question, and, um, are you visiting, uh, driveway or garage, where, where?
Yeah, we project those things to, because, that what I say is that. If you, if we need, need to share the parking, we have the parking right here, and between the park and the construction, it's a lot of space. Uh, we can adjust, there'll be more over here, if you something about to the, the neighbor over there. But it's, it's no reason to think about that, because it's a lot of space, and the area we have is big. And this doesn't want to cover for the whole, the whole area.
And you good?
I guess I'm good, I mean, I, I, uh. I understand the, the need.
Based on, um, and again, this is for staff. I apologize for not talking directly to you, but most of my questions are technical.
About, be free.
He has the answer, Richard has the answer. Um, eleven thousand four hundred twenty eight square feet is a proposed new lot. What would be the maximum coverage on that?
Uh, so, and they have the commercial zone.
That's good. Imagine, you know, commercial zone is maximum coverage greater than.
Yeah.
The houses, the proposed house is twelve hundred square feet, that's ten percent.
And a lot of coverage in the neighborhood commercial can be up to sixty percent.
Wow.
My guess. Our lot coverage is pretty generous. Ten, ten, and ten. I'm so nice.
Yeah, I mean, the, the patient of the proposed house, it doesn't show it all, right?
Right, right. Yeah, and this.
Need to, if he's not gonna ask a variance for it, that he doesn't need a variance, put it there, it's like.
Right, doesn't need that.
Okay.
Right, and this eleven thousand four hundred twenty eight square feet. This map I just drew for him as an example that this is how it could be split. And then I did the G I S and I measured the two sides, and that's what I.
So, the variance that we're asking for is. To, not so, not to subdivide property, that's somebody else, right?
Correct.
It's to place a residential.
Well, to allow for the residential.
Use on a commercial property.
I see.
So if we say yes, then he has to spoke, talk to people about getting a variance on subdividing the lot?
No, he has to submit a subdivision application.
Okay.
Uh, so, so his subdivision application.
Okay.
Uh, he can sub the, he can go apply tomorrow.
Right.
And subdivide, I mean, based on everything I see here. I don't see why there would be any obstacles, I don't see wetlands issues, environmental issues, so. It could be split.
Okay.
But like I said before, I advised him, because of where, what he ultimately wants to achieve. Is to have a house there, which isn't permitted, so he said, apply for the use variance first, because. I'm cautious, he wouldn't have issues through subdivision.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes sense, I, I was wondering, you know, what the order of things would be, and what would make sense.
Right.
So, a survey is expensive. Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, one last question for staff, when that involves. Adjacent residential properties, so are there any, is this a but, a residential? So.
Yes. Give me back and look at it.
Using that.
Yeah, there you go.
Right, so that's a multi-family right here about.
Okay, that's multiple family, okay, and multiple family resident.
Are, are, are all those houses there in the red area, are they? The zone is multi-family, are they back to the whole of the family?
I don't know, we, we get so many mixed. Uses within our districts that, we're gonna commercial and multi-family.
And they didn't, they didn't, they didn't look like.
So in a multi-family zone, as of right, a single family or two-family home is a permitted use, which means I can admit, I can. Issue an administrative zoning permit.
Yeah.
Three family and above.
Yeah.
Requires commission.
Thank you. I'm sorry, labor this, but I'm just wanting to get it right. These are. Looking for the agenda. The agenda, that's the old agenda. Right, this is the. Where here? Oh, it is, okay. That's why I couldn't find them state.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yeah, mark the borders, I seem like a.
No. You see many correspondences.
So currently the property is an N C zone, right?
Correct.
Commercial, full commercial. And we're asking go to what? C R?
Don't just ask.
Make a residential.
Just to promote.
Residential. Wouldn't it have been easier to ask for grants to, to include multi-family?
That would have been a zone change.
Oh.
Which, I mean. Given. The process of the zone change. Or that would, but it might make more sense to do a zone change, but the process of the zone change. Is much more extensive, and we're in the process of doing. Regulation updates, which is probably gonna end up in some zone changes too.
Okay. Right. That concludes my interruptions. Thank you very much, thanks for indulging.
Okay. Um. I'm just not sure of the hardship on this one.
Look towards all of them.
I'm, I'm. I'm. I'm just not sure of the hardship, that's, I'm not, at this point, I don't see it. Um. And, and that's, that's our requirement.
Right. It's, uh, it's not listed in the application. Or hasn't been presented. It's a, it's a hard strange hardship. Um. And. What we're gonna, what we're asking of you, sir, is to tell us why. We have to give you a variance for this, and it's gotta be specific to the property. It can't be specific to the owner or the use. You know, why do you have that, why would anybody else that was living there would need to do this to make it a residential?
Yes, ma'am. You say, why, what?
Why do you need this, why do you need to make it a residential, that if it weren't you living there, that the property would have to go through that?
I, I, I'll tell in the beginning. I, I decide to do that, because my sister is getting all, and discussed illness, she, sooner later, you cannot walk anymore. So I wanna have her next to me. So. The thing is my property, I have the rights to build an, uh, a house for her. I'm starting, right? Because, like I tell you, I never told to, to the story of the fact, because I like it, I love it. But sometimes you have to do things, it's no, the little things you want. But sometimes you have to do things, it's no, the little things you want. Is that, if you see the map, is the only property around with the trees in the back. I, I like that. Like I tell you, the bills, the square, the bills comes back my job. We share time, we do time, you know, it's beautiful. But, like I tell you, sometimes. You don't do whatever you like, it, you do whatever you have to do. That's the reason.
Oh, thank you.
Donnie, any questions?
No, I'm all set.
Ed? No. Bob?
Uh, yeah, um, Mr. Syria, Syria?
That's right.
Excuse me, your, your last name, Mr. Syria?
Yes.
How long have you had yourself, how long have you owned this house?
Uh, ten, two thousand ten.
Fifteen years.
I've been in United States, in, in Connecticut, that's two thousand one.
Uh, this was, thank you, that was why I asked when the zoning had changed, so. Okay. Dave, anything else? Is there anything else you'd like to add, sir?
I just wanna thanks to you for your time.
Okay.
I really appreciate your time, because I know that you are this. And I hope you approve my petition. Because, uh, I really need. I wish like, maybe you know the, the company who can build an house faster than. Now, if you know someone and you can tell me, this fantastic.
All right, we're gonna ask other people to speak. And if anybody speaks in opposition, we'll give you a second to talk, again, okay?
Okay.
All right, so anyone else to speak in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Hearing none, is there anyone to speak in opposition? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none, is there anything else you'd like to add? Once we close the hearing, we can't take any additional testimony.
Okay.
So, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No. Since we finished this section. The meaning is, you approve this, the, the, the construction?
We're gonna vote on, we're gonna hear the other one and then we're gonna vote.
For all of you.
Yes.
Okay. What is the next step?
Uh. Yeah, we're, the next step is, we're gonna hear, we're gonna hear another proposal. And then we're gonna vote on both of them. And then if they get approved. There's a fifteen-day appeal period that you would have to wait and come back and see a bridge. If it gets denied, you can appeal it and you could take it to the state.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close, Bob, thanks.
A second. All those in favor, close?
Bob, Phoenix, I.
And everybody, I. Dave, I.
Donnie?
Don, Donnie, I.
Mark Benjamin, I. Okay. We're gonna go on to the next one.
Okay.
Thank you. Application V twenty-five oh one. One fifty-five Baltic Road, request relief from zoning regulation of four point one, four point one, to reduce the side yard setback. From ten feet to five feet for the construction of a twenty-two by twenty carport. Property of Norman Renee Bevo. Application Norman Renee Bevo assessors, map six, block one, lot twenty-two. Zone R forty. Got rich. Yep, sorry, that's something that's up there. I'm saying. Okay, exhibits. Uh, number one, variance application. Two is the field card, three is the, the Google notice, four is the letters and letter. Five is the butter's list, six is the butter's map, seven is Baltic Road GIS map. Um, eight is a site sketch, and nine are images. Of the sites. The applicants, please come forward. Names and address for the record.
Renee Bevo, one fifty-five Baltic Road, knowledge.
Lauren Devo, one fifty-five Baltic Road. Sounds like I got the pronunciation right, so. Thank you for agreeing with the way I said it. All right, explain to the board what you'd like to do, why you need a variance to do it. And the hardship if it weren't granted.
Uh, we want to replace the carport that's already there.
Okay.
Um, upon doing so, we found that it will infringe upon the ten-foot setback. However, only a very small portion, a very small corner of it will infringe. That kinda shaded area right there, that, that's the only part that's putting fringe upon the setback. It is the best location for it. If, um. If we can't put it there, you know, and.
If we were moving forward, you'd be in driveway.
Yeah, there is.
Gotcha. Is that? You said you wanna replace the one that's there, is the one that's there already doing this?
It's.
It's covering my truck right now, yeah, but is it already? In that?
No, it's just the shelter logic, ten.
It's, it's kinda in that zone, I guess.
Yes.
I didn't realize. But that shelter logic is probably like a ten or twelve by twenty-six, where this is gonna be. Ten by twenty, okay. And this is gonna be twenty by twenty, twenty-two or something. You look on the other side of the truck, you can see camp. Yep. Wanna protect your nice stuff?
Oh, I succeed when I have both the car and camper covered.
Yeah.
Somebody mark this here, sort of unknown.
Yeah, I don't know what it is, it's on here now. There's only one building there, which is our shed.
Yeah, that base layer, the GIS is very old, so it, it's taken from an old aerial photo.
Okay.
Something that doesn't exist, so that's not there.
No.
Is, is there a spot where it could be? Reasonably put, wouldn't require a variance? Like, to the, to the. Shifted to the back?
Just trying to avoid blocking the river, where the house is, we face the back lot with the river. We're just trying to avoid that, and from the corner of the house, on the left side, that dark area. Diagonally, there's a septic line going, and I. Trying to avoid getting near that.
So, where at, is the? The, this, the, roughly the septic? Or that, probably down the road.
It's the left side in the back. Kinda going, I guess, more tunnel. Cause septic tank is in the top right-hand. It's heading in that direction. Just trying to avoid that.
And right-hand corners, yes, that's where the river.
Top.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I assume that where the twenty-two marker is, that's probably your drain port?
I think it's a little bit closer.
Further out, further out toward the river, yeah, but it's back there though.
Yeah.
So. Yeah. Just a question about the proposed. Buildings. Um, is this gonna be a frame structure? Let's see, as opposed to the tent we have now? Yeah, okay.
Twenty by twenty, a twenty foot by twenty is the carport, so the carport would be similar to the one you have now.
Won't be ten.
Okay.
Yeah. Open-sided building. See, that's where, that's where we get trouble, that we're going to allow. Something, anything. To be built within the setback, so. It's being proposed as a carport, right? But eventually, you wanna close it in or something like that, like the book about that. Once we. Put the variance down. It's just, we have to look at setback and. Okay. Um. I'm splitting hairs. But. The sketch is showing, you're showing fifty-eight inches. To the property line, on that corner. And you're asking for five feet. It's, but it, but it matters, unfortunately, you know, so. We can only give you sixty inches. You know. It would have to. He shipped it to, two inches. Uh, I'm just.
As long as it's not. Then we're in trouble.
Well, five feet would. Five feet two.
I think I, you wouldn't want me driving the camper down the driveway, then I think I could flip that.
Um. Yeah, it's just, every once in a while, when we start getting it that close. Uh, again, I'm. Being a little specific on it, but it does matter. So, you wouldn't be a proponent, you wouldn't be opposed to just, you, you would understand if we would grant it, we're only granting five feet, that gets with you on. Okay. Dave, anything? All right, Bob? Nothing. Ed? Donnie?
No, I'm all set.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
And your hardship is?
Clean blocking the river, separate line and blocking the drive.
Thank you. Again, I'm gonna ask for other people to speak, then oppose, and then we'll, uh, give you an opportunity. Uh, did we check if there was anybody else online?
Uh, there is nobody, okay.
Uh, anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone else to speak in favor? Hearing none, anyone to speak in opposition? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we close this?
Should we close, should we close, Bob, thanks?
All those in favor, close?
Bob, Peter, I.
And everybody, I. Dave, Mark, I.
Donnie?
God. I.
Mark Benjamin, I. Closed. All right. All right, into decisions. V twenty-four twelve, one oh five on Nico Street, request a use for zoning regulation, section two point three. Neighborhood commercial zone standards for the purpose of the construction of a single-family home. Where single-family home is out of permitted use in the zone. Subject to subdivision approval, property of Glarimos Syria, application Glarimos Syria. Assessors map eighty-four, block two, lot seventy, neighborhood commercial.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion's being seconded, all those, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Motion's made in second, we're going to discussion.
Okay.
I, um. Kinda feel out that, although it wasn't stated. The denial of this application would actually create a hardship. Worse than what the applicant has at this time. But currently, he's in a residential building, a commercial property. In and of itself. Uh, makes his occupancy of the building illegal. According to zoning.
Well, it's non-conforming.
Non-conforming to zoning. So, um. The hardship being that if we do not approve the application. The applicant would be denied his, his, uh, best use of property. Uh, or, or potentially lose, uh, his continued use after fifteen years of, of being on the problem. Ed?
Well, I mean, I, I think the point, at least in my mind, is, uh, yeah, the hardship is kinda soft. Uh, but I also understand. That. It's just. Uh, you, you. The, the area is. Lots of simple things. It's just a couple of things. So, it really wouldn't stand out. I'm okay.
Donnie?
Yeah, I kind of agree that, um, he wouldn't be able to use the property the way he should have. I mean, it's not his fault with the changes in the zoning and, you know, the regulations. So, therefore, the best use of it is probably, um. He should be given the use of the property to put a home on it.
Dave? This one's a, a very hard one, um. Because I believe he should have the ability to do. What, what he wants to do. Um, but I don't think there's, uh. A hardship such that the, the property has no value. And. Um. I mean, I just have very mixed emotions on it, obviously. Um, I, I. I don't think I can grant, cause I don't believe there's. A hardship in the sense that there's zero, that the property has zero value, you don't do this. That's. That's all really I have at this point.
I was hoping you didn't go the other way, so I was the only stickler.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm. Gonna go further than Dave. He has reasonable use, he's creating a lot. And he wants reasonable use of, this is, this is a building lot with a residential lot, if it permitted. It's a nice lot, the applicant expressed on most of this. And he's trying to create another lot for residential use in a commercial zone. And. My heart agrees with three of you. But. The regulations. Make me a bad guy. And, and I can't, he can get a subdivision and put a dentist office in there. You know, that's, that's reasonably useful, that, for what he's, what that zone is. I, as much as I would like to grant, and I cannot grant. On the hardship that was presented, it, it's just, it's unfortunate, but the regulations don't give you that use, so. I was hoping I was gonna be doing it that way. Unless you guys can convince me otherwise. I'm open, I'm open to, to expand on your opinions.
If we, if we explore the possibility, you know, I don't know if this is a tough question, but if we explore the possibility to. Expanding this current residence that you can. In the same form.
Yeah, but that's not what's in front of us. So even if we were to discuss that, that's not what's. Right. In the, in the notice, we, we can't do that.
If we reject this, then we come back and say.
That's, so he would have to, if. If that was an option, then it would be another variance application to expand the nonconforming use, because the use of the home now is.
Okay, still not.
Legal, nonconforming, which means it can continue. It could be rebuilt if it burned down or.
Yeah.
You know, flooded or something.
Can't increase the footprint of it.
Right, you can't, you can't expand it or increase it. But it can't continue theoretically, this use as it is in perpetuity. I'd like to include also. To support my. To back up my support of this. Application that we were presented with. A plan to subdivide the property. And I think there was even some language in the. In the description. Subject to subdivision approval. I don't know if any of the other members. Are considering. That subdivision, but I don't believe it should be part of our consideration. In what we're asked, being asked, asked to do. Which is to allow a residential use of a parcel of property in a commercial zone. Which the property has been subject to for the past fifteen or more years.
So you're saying, so you're saying there's no need to subdivide it?
So what, that's not what we're being asked, but we're not asked.
Right.
There we are, in property, we're asked, so. So let me clarify, the variance is to. The ultimate goal is for him to subdivide and build another house.
That's a goal.
That's the goal.
But that's not the application.
So that is the application in front of you, because if he had put an application in. To add another single family residence to the house, that would have been a different application. His goal was to split it, to build a house for his sister.
That's recognized as his goal, but that's not what.
Right.
Purpose of the application is for, purpose of the application is to take the existing lot. As it is presented. And to allow the use of residential as opposed to commercial. Well, in that theory, then he doesn't need the variance, because it's already a residential use. But it's not a conforming residential use.
Right, right.
It's a nonconforming residential use, and other variants would make it conformal.
Definitely, but a variance to make the, uh, conforming residential use would not. Allow for the second home on the property. So the whole pretense of this was because he wants to split it to build a second home, that's why that map is in there showing that.
That's just confusing.
Theoretically, you know, and the other thing to take into consideration that. On any application, once you grant the variance. No matter what is said in hearing. You have no control.
Correct, right.
So somebody says, I'm doing this and this is my goal. And this is the reason you have no control.
Correct, that's, and that's my point, to play devil's advocate.
Right.
If we make this app, if we approve this application. To turn the lot as it is today. Be conforming residential. Doesn't have to subdivide.
But you can't, you can't do that, because in essence, you're doing, trying to do a zone change.
Change the zone change, right, that's.
And we can't grant a zone change.
Right, we're just, we're just trying to make it, we're just trying to bury. The existing zoning, zoning. Regulation. Right, maybe like variants to the existing zoning regulation.
But I couldn't. I couldn't issue a zoning permit. I couldn't issue a zoning permit for him to build a second single family home.
That's a problem for later, I mean, I think, I think the board needs to address. What it's, what it's charged to do, and that's to. But the application clearly reads, it's construction of a single family home. Subject to a subdivision, you know, you have, they have to. If the subdivision's approved and we had approved. We can approve tonight, and if the subdivision's not approved. Ours was a waste of time, the subdivision has to be approved to create a second lot. Because there's already one residential property on this entire lot. So he's gonna take a piece of it, create a second lot. That's ne- it's neighborhood commercial. And for that lot, he's asking for a variance. Okay, I apologize for not recognizing that that was a condition of.
If we don't approve any of his options, what other options does he have, other than trying to get the zoning changed? Appeal for a stay.
That changes the whole picture, because if he has to get. It approved, the lots. Then that changes that subdivision, what he wanted to do. You have to get the subdivision before he wants to put the house in. So you're really working backwards.
Well, the rea- so the reason why he's here seeking the variance for the use. Is because a subdivision would cost him thousands of dollars.
Yeah, right.
It was for the, to seek the use variance first, because if the use variance isn't granted, then he hasn't spent a lot of money in subdivision approval.
Yeah, you're right, Richard, yeah.
So. The easiest thing. If this were to get denied, if it gets approved, it goes, gets a subdivision, moves on. But if it were to get denied. He could go to the state and, and appeal our decision. Our decision being appealed is based on our hardship. So it would be critical for the motion. To reflect the hardship that you see, because that's what the state, if it went that way, would be, yeah. So. The guy that made the motion should make the motion based on the hardship that he sees.
I'll stand with my, my original motion.
Okay.
The hardship being the, the best use. Reasonable investments in property.
You're good with the second, Ed?
Yeah.
Any additional comment? Ed? Bob? Ed? Dottie?
No, I guess not.
I'm all set. All those in favor to grant? As presented. Signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Uh, Mark Benjamin, aye. Opposed, Mark Benjamin opposed, Steve Martin opposed.
Bobby exposed.
Did everybody opposed?
Dottie opposed.
Thank you, motion defeated. You know, it's not.
I'm very sorry. So they, so they didn't approve. I can talk to you on Thursday. Yeah, I can talk to you, they didn't approve it, I can talk to you on Thursday, I'll be here Thursday morning, probably, depending on the weather. Between nine thirty and ten o'clock.
So. You didn't approve the, the. Okay, you tell me, why is the reason you don't approve?
We'll let, we'll let Rich explain it to you on Thursday.
He will explain to me, what's the reason why.
Yes, he will.
But I, I told you I approve, because it's the, it's my right, it's my property. And I, in this, in this country, the, the. How do you call it? The, it's free, it's a real. Respect the, the human rights. And that one is one of my rights.
I understand that, sir, but we have regulations, he can explain it on Friday, and he, on Thursday, he can explain your field process.
Okay, all right, so I will get. The, the, so it's the chance to apply again. To see if you have the, the, you feel like approve.
It's, it's not, it's not based on our, our. Our, our feelings at all, because we, I think every one of us would, would like to grant.
Otherwise, I have to go to the court to make you approve.
They would.
Feel.
Okay, feel, yes.
Thank you very much.
It's not, it's not based on our emotions, because we would, we would love to give that to you, I, I think I can speak for everyone.
I have to understand.
Every one of us would like to.
I ha- I have the right to do. And you have the right to say yes or no, correct? So, but I have to know. Why the, you deny.
Okay.
First of all, second.
Sir.
I will take it to the engineer and see if you are right.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, yeah. Application V twenty five oh one, one fifty five Baltic Road, request relief from zoning regulation four point one, four point one. Reduce side yard setback from ten feet to five feet. For the construction of twenty two by twenty carport property by Norman Renee Bayball. Uh, application on already at the ball. Assessors map six, block one, lot twenty two, zoning R forty zone. All right. We'll get a motion.
Motion to approve, uh, application V twenty five oh one. With the hardship being the, the topography and outstanding features on the property.
I'll second that, if you'll specify the outstanding features are the septic line and the driveway configuration.
Yeah, the, the septic system is what I wanted to hear about.
What? So, uh, so modify. Dave?
The start? Yeah, I'm gonna go right around like I've been doing all night.
Yep.
Okay. Um. I think there's. Other spots to put this, so I don't think the. Septic line in and of itself. Um, and the topography or, and the driveway are such, are adequate hardships. Um, the septic system, if that was closer by maybe. But the, the septic line and the driveway, I, I don't think are, are, are adequate hardships for this. Um, review, I, I understand why they want it where it's at. Um, but blocking you, I don't think is, is a, a hardship. That, that we are allowed to consider.
Would you? So it's five feet versus ten, would you be open to eight feet versus ten? You know, if they kicked it out a couple of feet? Or, or do you wanna see the whole ten?
Um, why, I, I suspect that if we take anything away from it. Then it makes it very hard for them to back in their truck and camper. So in a practical sense, I don't think it works for them.
Okay. Bob? Uh, nope. Ed?
Yeah, I mean, I even have a good point, I just don't have a feeling for, you know. What that means in terms of the septic system and how much of a hardship that really is, assuming it is. Extensive and, and involved, it's an assumption on my part. Um, don't, the, the septic system isn't really indicated here on the, the. Site plan at all. I can see. Why they would wanna do it. But, I mean, based on, based on the knowledge that I have and the information that I have, I mean. I still feel that it should not be that big of an issue. So I'm still in favor of it.
Oh, you didn't know which way was that big of an issue?
I wanted to be fair there, so I'm still in favor of it.
Dottie?
Well, first of all, I understand the septic system. But if they physically have had that structure there. Um, before. My thinking here is if the structure's going to be altered. What are they basically putting up in the place? That would be a problem with the septic system or the driveway. So initially. I, I can see what they're talking about, but also you're talking, another thing is, you have two inch. Two inches you're dealing with here too. So the movement of the structure in the back, like for, what sixty? Was sixty two, and you said to sixty? Um, that, that's another issue involved. But I still say, um, you know, you, plus he indicated to look out of his house. If it was at the angle, he couldn't seem to see like the river going by and all. Which would be different on the obstruction of, of where it's located now. I, I don't know, I, I don't live there, so I'm just saying. Of what the individual said to me, the person. That owns the property, I, I don't know. It's, my theory is the septic, that would bother me if there was, you know, if you, you gotta be very careful with septic, you know that. But. That's what I said, I thinking, I don't know what else anybody thinks.
Oh. Septic tank is a problem. You're not gonna drive over a septic tank unless it's an H twenty and it's rated to be driven over. Septic pipe driving over its lot. You know, it's, it varies compactly, and you're not gonna have any issue with it. Um. I'm looking at. I can understand the view. I'm also looking at. Five feet versus ten next to a carport. Next to a shed that was, I, I agree with Dave. That it's a little soft. But we have a, um. We've had a, a covered tent there for probably ten or fifteen years. It's backing up to a six foot high wood fence. Not to say that, as we explained. This could turn into a twenty by twenty two, two story garage, the tower's over the top of it. Um, or because it's a camper, could have fourteen foot doors and be extremely tall. But for the simple. Fact. To maintain access to get into the backyard. For a potential septic problem or to turn a camper around. I agree, it's not the strongest of reasons, but I will support this one. Um, I do think. A twenty by twenty two is a reasonable sized garage. Call it a carport, but I'm calling it what it potentially could be.
Yeah.
Close to the. Five feet off the property line, and my other point was. The neighbor's house is on the opposite side over there, and they come in on the driveway and they're that much further away.
Right.
So it's not, if that house were closer, I'd be less inclined to put it up. So I'll be, I will be supportive, oh, there you have it.
So just, just to. Add something for thinking, not that I'm suggesting anything. But if anybody's concerned about. A conversion in the future, turning it to a garage, putting a second story on or anything. The board has the authority to approve with conditions. So you could impose restrictive conditions in an approval.
Yeah, but that's not allowing him to have maximum use of the property. You know, yeah.
Variance. He's asking for variance of the regulations, we're well within our rights to limit how much we're allowing him to vary it.
Yeah, I know, we can do that, but to me, I don't think he's gonna want, I don't know, I wouldn't put two, two. Yeah, I know, we can do that, but to me, I don't think he's gonna want, I don't know, I wouldn't put too, too, too tall of a structure, because again, that would obstruct his view, he brought that up earlier.
I didn't realize that we could put some kind of a caveat on it.
Absolutely.
It's, you know, we've never done that, at least not in my case, right? And, uh, which isn't much, I, I understand.
We rarely do it.
I, I would have, I would have, I would have liked to have known that earlier, there was another one, I would have thought, geez, too bad, can't do that.
And, and that's why I asked Dave if he would consider going to the eight feet.
Yeah.
You know, we can restrict it more.
Yeah, 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 that I can do. But caveat for future use. Thanks, bud.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that was the one that could have happened.
Right. Um. All right, I think there's something there, should that move.
Yeah.
Your motion?
My motion stands, uh, with the modifications to make.
Okay. You just said your motion, you're the motion maker.
Motion on for a second. Discussion.
I'm gonna amend that motion. To a, uh, uh, single-story, max height of sixteen feet. So.
So amended.
Is that enough for camper? I want this up, I'm trying to keep it so a twenty, a twenty feet. Right, I, I, I'm trying to keep it so it doesn't turn into a second story. A twelve-foot door is, you could drive any.
Yeah, my, my thirty-two-foot Harley, which was eleven, six, six, to the top of the. So twelve feet is more than that, with, with a pitch of four twelve. Um, you could have a ridge essentially seventeen feet.
So you said maximum eighteen feet, so, single-story with maximum eighteen feet.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So amended.
Sure. Second the amendment. Second. All those in favor of the amendment? Oh, all those in favor to approve motion as amended?
Bobby excited.
Ed, did everybody, aye? Dottie?
Yeah, well, what size am I talking about now here? I couldn't get his figures, twenty by.
Uh, twenty by twenty-two.
Oh, okay.
Five feet off the property line, not as the plan shows, it's gonna be five feet. And back's height of eighteen feet to the feet.
Okay, all right, okay, I'll accept the amendment.
You accept the motion?
Yes.
Mark Benjamin, aye? Dave? Four one, motion passes. Right, so it, it passed.
So. The waiting, certain waiting period now?
There's a fifteen-day appeal period, so in this fifteen days, I will prepare a notice to, and send it to you with instructions to file that in the city clerk's office. Once it's on the land records, it becomes valid. You can hold it in your safety deposit box for forty years, and it's not valid until it's filed over there. Um, so you file that, and we, we apply, go through the permit process with the zoning and the, the administrative zoning permit and the building permit to actually build the structure.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a nice day. Being your motion to adjourn?
Nope. Staff, I'll be. Miscellaneous training, yeah, though?
Yeah, Deanna gave me a, a stack of different things that are, that, that they're not really training, they're more informational stuff.
Do we get credit for reading them?
Well, if, if you, you know, if you want, I'll.
It's important to know. Hours, hours, right?
That's right.
It's not, I'll make it work.
So I guess you take one and pass it along. No, they're, they're a federation of planning and zoning agencies, it's in these old quarterly newsletters that she saw some stuff that she thought was useful information.
So speaking of the training thing, um, I, you know for fact that there's gonna be, uh, available, uh, Zoom meetings.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because I, I stamp my feet until we got them last time.
Good, good.
Because I wasn't going all over the state to do this.
Yeah.
And I will start my feet again.
Good thing.
There's just extra copies of that. Do you want to give, you got one?
Hands go.
Richard, can you send me a packet of that in the mail?
Yeah, I can do that.
All right, thank you.
The city council's worse at doing it than we are, and they end up in all those classes.
Yeah, so not surprised.
Yeah, and, and the whole thing about the, the training, I mean, now that it's this, the statute, the towns have, they, they really have to try to make sure everybody meets the statutory requirement. Um, and it's more because of the, on the appeal side. If something is appealed, an attorney can use the claim, that member who voted didn't meet the statutory requirement for the training, so it's, it's a liability in town.
Find those lawyers.
Yeah.
Crazy.
Adjourn, Bobby.
Second by Ed. All those in favor of adjourn?
Dottie, aye.
And aye.
David, Mark, Tim and I, not recording.
Thank you, everybody.